Here.
Mr. Carrick.
Here.
Mr. Tucci.
Here.
Mr. Soloro.
Here.
Mr. Prino.
Here.
You talking about it?
Here.
Mr. Flower.
Here. Okay. First item on the agenda this evening is adjourned public hearing regarding Sunup Properties LLC Lot Line realignment. Get a motion to open?
I'll make that.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Good evening, Mark Day, day and hearing, representing Sunup Construction. As the board knows, the application is a lot line realignment between lots D and lots... Basically, what we're doing is just taking up the front block and just creating a straight line between them. And other than that, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right, so obviously, all the corrections that... Most of the corrections have been made to the plan as required by the engineer and planner. Except we do have... Planner does have a amendment.
Right.
As regard to the resolution.
Right, do you have a copy, Mark?
I do, excuse me.
It's, it's really pretty minor. On page three, it would be item, a new item five F, which would say that the plat shall show an easement for storm... For the storm drainage line from the airport if one exists. Or such easement exists.
Actually, to be more technical, what I'd like it to say is evidence satisfactory to the planning board attorney, whether an easement exists or not. And if such an easement exists, then have it shown on the plat.
Okay.
Just so we can close that out.
That's the only change.
Okay, and you have no... You've read the resolutions, no open... No objections to what's been written?
No.
Okay. So I guess at this point, I mean, need a motion from the board to approve the...
Close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Final subdivision plat approval.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Bruce.
Oops, sorry.
You need to ask if there's any comment from the public and then close the public hearing.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on behalf of this application? All right, seeing there's none, will we get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that.
Second.
All right, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now we need a motion to go ahead and approve the resolution as amended.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so our next item on the agenda this evening is adjourned public hearing for NERP Holding Tractor Supply Company and Retail Store. Need a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Hello, good evening, Al Glad, cutting and feder. So we were last before the board on June 17th. At that time, you guys had adjourned the public hearing as noted. And also, we had a negative declaration prepared, but we deferred adopting the neg deck until we responded in writing and gave your consultants some more background information on the project. Since that time, we've been busy. We've submitted written responses to comments given by the public at the public hearing. We've submitted written responses to your consultants. We've revised the plans and incorporated the changes noted by the consultants in this board. The DOT has responded, saying we've addressed all of their concerns regarding site access with the shared access with Acura. We've submitted an updated EAF. We've provided the information on the stormwater that was requested by your consulting engineer. And the planner has issued subsequent comment memos on our submission that we made on June 29th. And as far as those go, we don't see any major issues in those comment memos. And also, Jim, I'm here tonight with Jim Cassidy, our project engineer. And he is going to go over some issues regarding the berm and the fencing, because I know that was a big point of discussion at the last meeting. So I'll turn it over to him.
Okay. Okay, yeah, also, if there's anyone from the public here, the responses to all the questions that were brought up at the last meeting are on the table in the back. So if you haven't gotten them, they are back there.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional engineering principal at the firm, Halsey Pearson Cassidy. What I wanted to go over this evening, number one is we did go through all the public comments and we did write a response letter to all of them. Not going to go over each one individually. But one of the items that I think was a particular concern was the proposable landscape berm along the southerly property line. This being site plan along the... This portion here, what we're originally proposing was a robust row of evergreens and deciduous trees. There was a request that we build a berm in that area and that we also construct the fence along the top of it. The applicant is more than willing to do both, but I just wanted to be clear with the issues with doing that. So what we did in your plan set is there's several cross-sections, actually, one section at each property. If you look at a typical cross-section, the left-hand side would be the property line. As a recommendation, there was also, sorry, a recommendation that we provide like a five-foot wide no-grade area so we don't get too close to the property and then start the berm from there, coming up at about a two-to-one slope. We can't come up to a peak. We need to provide a level plateau at the top so we can put whatever plantings and a fence along the top of it and then slope back down into our parking lot. In addition to, I'm showing about a three-foot snow shelf along the edge of the parking. The issue is if we put a fence in the center of that and then I put evergreens on either side of it, what we find is that when you have a solid fence like that, it tends to stunt the growth of the evergreens. We've had, not had a lot of success. You find that the light color of the fence tends to burn out the lower portion of the evergreens. Vice versa, if the evergreens do flourish, they can get up to, you know, thirty feet height easily. What happens is branches fall over time. When branches fall, it knocks down fence. So although we're willing to do whatever the commission would prefer, we were willing to do both. But just want to make everyone aware that, you know, it's not a great scenario to have them both up there. Our preference would be to do one, one or the other on this particular site, to have a viable buffer along that southerly property line, something that's going to survive for a long time. I believe there was also a question last time from the board as to the retaining wall along the edge of the access driveway. What's it going to be like? We have a fence along the top of it. Your planning staff had made the recommendation that if we're going to put a fence, such as the chain link fence, that we do a black vinyl chain link fence. We're in agreement with that. The retaining wall along that side of the property would be a segmental retaining wall, big block, concrete retaining wall. So similar scenario where you would have the site access drive. This particular wall is about six feet in height. Each one of those blocks is about two feet, so similar to what we have. And then on the top of it, in this particular case, it's a four-foot high chain link fence. We would be six foot. But by going to the black vinyl, it kind of blends into the, the natural landscape. You really don't notice it, so it doesn't stand out. So we'd be doing something very similar to that. We went through all the other staff comments. We've, I believe we've addressed the majority of them at this point, along with submitting our hydraulic computations for the proposed stormwater management system. And we write, we're in response letters to all the comments that were provided to us. So I believe at this point, everything has been addressed. So we're gladly, if any questions that the board may have.
David, in regards to the fence, I'm trying to remember the last we talked about this, there was going to be a combination or was it just fence only?
If I remember correctly, I believe, Jim, you said if there was going to be a fence, there would not be room for landscaping. And I think the board was satisfied with the fence and no landscaping, I think.
Yeah, so what the, what we were saying, and if I wasn't clear on it, I apologize. We're willing to do either or, the combination of both. We took it as the board and the public, both. I just wanted everyone to be aware, if we do both, one usually gets compromised. Usually, what we find planting the evergreens, they tend to have their growth stunted because of the solid fence that they're, we're trying to plant them against. The other thing you can look at is this is a six-foot solid fence. Do you move it down closer to the property line? But in doing that, you have a six-foot berm with a six-foot fence. So what are we effectively doing? The berm is, then the fence is no higher than the berm that we're putting in.
My recollection is that the planning board was satisfied with the berm and fence without landscaping, but I'll let the board speak for itself.
Okay. Trying to remember too, is the others, along that, on that southerly border, there's, was the fence originally supposed to go on top of the retaining wall?
There will be a fence on top of the retaining wall, but the retaining wall's not the entire length of that property line.
Different fence.
Different fence, right.
We need a safety fence along the top of the retaining wall, so the retaining wall starts here and then goes around the back. So there will be a retaining wall, or a fence along that entire retaining wall.
So the retaining wall starts just at the back of the building or it starts up towards the front?
No, it starts right here.
Just starts right here?
Starts here and comes along the back and then ends here.
Okay.
This is all a natural grade.
Matt Darling, I'm the applicant. I, just, just to clarify, the, the commission wishes to have just a fence instead of our robust landscaping plan and, and trees and all that. I'm confused.
I'm trying to remember the conversation of where we left off with that. That's the only problem.
I, I think the board was told that it could be landscaping and a fence.
Right, which is normally what we ask for, is a combination of both. But to put the fence on the berm, you know, in between the trees, I can understand the concern that the, you know, the trees are gonna, you have nowhere to grow. You know, if you're running it down in the center of the berm and then you're staggering trees to either side, as it was shown on, on their first plan that they had put out.
What if it was just a fence and one row of trees with some space between the trees and the fence?
We could, we could do that, but again, we find that the... Usually, when you're planting new plants against a fence, a solid fence like this, we tend to see the, the plant stunted. It's better to separate the two, if we're going to do that.
Distance between the two.
Sure. If we're going to do that, what I would end up doing is put the fence closer to one edge of that top of the berm.
Right.
So to, closer to this edge.
Because you've, you've shown two trees and a fence down the middle.
Correct.
It seems like there's enough room to have one row of trees and a fence.
Sure, we're not going to be able to plant the, the evergreen on the slope. So we usually create the plateau up on the top so we have a place to put the root wall. You want it in a flat area. So, you know, the best I'm going to be able to do is put the fence on one side and then put the evergreen.
Right.
So it'll be about six-foot separation between.
So there would be both with some separation to keep the trees helping.
The question's also going to come up as to where does the fence go? Because once we have a fence, who maintains on the other side of the fence? If we have the evergreens, I think we'd probably want the evergreens for maintenance purposes, probably on our side of the fence. But, you know, again, I'll leave that up to the board, what their preference is, unless the residents want to maintain that area that's behind the fence.
Because the trees will provide.
Well, it's your property, though. I mean, why would, why would, you know, the residents have to...
Yeah, I think, so this is Neil Alexander over at Cutting and Feder. I think what our theory thinking is, and as you can see, this is collaborative, because we don't really have a, a broad preference. I think what we're just trying to lay out are the various factors to consider. So no matter how much it rains or how much you water a six-foot fence, it's going to be a six-foot fence, right? Whereas over time, the theory is, is that your landscaping will grow. And therefore, if you have two rows of landscaping without a fence, that you're going to get a much more lush situation than one row with a fence or a fence down below. I think that's what Jim's concern was, is obviously, we've, we've hit too many times the in-between, but moving the fence down here also, it doesn't do anything anymore. Then it's just, it's sort of, it's a waste of everyone's money, right? And, and it has no effect. If you put it downwards low, you're looking into the berm anyway.
I don't know if you're talking about putting a fence down.
No, I understand that. I don't think anyone was.
The beauty of, the beauty of the fence and evergreens is if the evergreens lose their lower branches, the fence will block the view.
That's, that's a fair point. That's, that's another factor worth, worth considering. And like I said, we're not arguing one way or another. We're just sort of laying out our thought process so that way we can come to the decision that's the most comfortable for the board. It's not a problem, none of these variables are a problem for us. We're comfortable with them. So it's whatever everyone collectively thinks is, is the best.
Yeah, I mean, my personal feeling is to put the fence down at the bottom of the berm and then put the, you know, landscape the berm. You know, because again, I don't see, getting rid of the landscaping creates an issue, you know, for the future, because the fence is never going to grow. The landscaping will, the landscaping will go ahead and, you know, over time, will grow tall enough where, you know, it's going to create a, you know, a much bigger buffer or a much bigger, you know, separation between residential properties and the, you know, and the new store.
I kind of agree with what David had said, is put the fence in closer to the tractor supply with a row of trees to the public side and keep a buffer of six, eight feet if it's possible. And leave it like that, not staggering the trees, but to put the trees at a reasonable distance, they'll grow and fill in and the fence will cover tractor supply from their view. Isn't that what they want?
Yeah. Well, again, we have no problem with, whatever, however the board will.
I mean, if we keep it low, I don't know if that's going to hide tractor supply from the view of these folks, but I think with the trees and the fence, it'll be a good compromise, but keeping the fence closer to the tractor supply side. And you guys maintain it.
Since this is a continuation of the public hearing, the board may want to hear the public comments on the alternatives before they make their final.
We'll reopen the floor, just looking to get the answer to the, to that question in particular. Okay.
We were wondering if you'd probably do the neg deck now and then go through the public hearing, because the public hearing issue really relates more to the site plan.
Well, right now, the neg deck talks about a berm and a fence and no landscaping.
Right.
So unless we wanted to change that to just screening. But I, I don't, but I don't, I don't know that we should. It would be better for, I think, for the neg deck to be clear about what's going to be there.
I just want to make sure we circle back.
We will.
Yeah, no, 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 we will, we will address that. But I, at this point, I mean, obviously, the public's gotten the response to the questions. I don't know if we need to go through.
Yeah, no, we definitely want to hear their, their thoughts.
Yeah. At this point, well, let's open up the floor to public comment. If there's anyone that wishes to speak regarding this project. Any questions, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Brian Zancer at Sixth Fowler House Road. So in regard to this particular issue, I would not want to see the, the landscaping replaced with a fence. I, I think the landscaping is definitely a much better option for that.
We're not going to replace it, they're going to do both.
Yeah, give both.
Yeah, and that's fine, too. At some point, we were talking about just the berm and the fence, and I wouldn't want to see the landscaping go. I will say that I know some of our neighbors have security concerns into just, besides just the visual. So I think some kind of fence is maybe what we need, even if that winds up being chain link or something. That's not going to impede the, the growth of the evergreens, because the, the security and the visual issues were two separate things. But from a visual perspective, I definitely wouldn't want to lose the plan.
Okay.
The other thing that I wanted to mention is I did, I had some questions last time that were addressed by the applicant, but the questions that I have are really around interpretation of the zoning code. They've clearly got a different interpretation of what it says than I do in regard to the yards and setbacks and a separate section that requires a buffer that I really think is meant to be in addition to the yards and setbacks. So I wouldn't expect them to answer that question, really. They're interpreting, interpreting it in their favor and I'm interpreting mine. So what I have is a process question. I'm trying to figure out who's the right referee for that. Is that this body, is that the zoning board, is that the town board?
Interpretation by the zoning administrator.
Okay.
And then if there is any, you know, if there's any conflict, then it would go to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
And they would make an interpretation or, you know, counsel for the zoning board would assist in that. But in terms of the buffer and setbacks, usually the buffer is within that setback area. We've done that for many projects. We don't set the set, we don't set the buffer and then from the edge of the buffer, from that point to the building. It's just one, the setback is totally separate from the buffer. You know, and they could, one could be on, you know, the, the, the buffer can be within the setback area. It's just to provide a landscaped area between, you know, the commercial building and the residential properties.
Okay.
Gil Piper for Fowler House. First of all, I'm not sure, did we introduce this gentleman? I'm not sure who he is.
Yes. My name is Neil Alexander, I'm a partner at Cutting and Feder. I'm going to try.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sorry, I said that too quickly.
Now, I just want to be clear on this, the buffer and the fence and the, what's that called?
Berm, the berm.
And the berm. So are we still talking about a berm with a fence and the landscaping?
Yes.
Are we still talking about?
Gosh.
Okay, because I'm not sure what the problem is as far as the trees growing, because this is taken from somebody who has this, one of the companies that has this, and there's a berm and then there's a fence and behind that are the trees. And the trees are on your side of the, on our side. Okay. I don't know if I should, can submit this, but this is working and everything looks like it's growing and this has been a couple of years and there's no issue. I think what we were hearing was that the property owners were saying that they were feeling like it was taking away from their, their spot, like they were using too much of their land to put three things in.
No.
And that's what was said, okay? I'm not sure if it was said in this atmosphere.
In terms of, in terms of the fence?
That they didn't, there wasn't enough room to do all three, right? Plus, they also said that, they, you know, that they didn't think the trees were going to grow. But this is somebody in Wapinsers that the trees are growing, there's no problem with that. We're concerned about security, okay? And I don't want somebody walking on my property, coming from their parking lot, walking on my property. And a fence there is something that we need. My other big question is what's happening on the Route Nine side to Fowler House? Is that their property or is that their property? Is that to Fowler House? There's trees all along Route Nine. Okay, so we have trees behind our houses going down Fowler House and then there's trees along Route Nine to provide her with some buffer, okay? Is there going to be a fence and a buffer on that side?
I think, I don't want to interrupt you, but I think I have a solution that may address, and between the two speakers who've spoken already, I think we have a better understanding, standing of the two.
Can you grab the microphone?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think we have a better understanding of the values that are, for the stakeholders, meaning visual and the security. We were just caucusing amongst ourselves and we're going to throw this idea out. So we have a five-foot property line, like a no-grading sign, zone. We would gladly put the fence that we were proposing for between the two rows down five feet in, which then gets back to, as Mr. Sotario was saying, we can face the good side out, face the bad side of the fence in. We can.
Define in and out. Good side of the fence.
The good side will face the neighbors. There's no point in having the berm have a good view, right? We'll have the neighbors have the good, the view of the good part of the sign, of, of the fence, rather. The bracing part of the fence will face the berm. This will be five feet in, so that should theoretically, at some point, leave us a place where we can walk through and get to it to maintain without going on to their property. You'll then berm up exactly as was explained by Jim, better than I can. Plant the two rows of trees that we were talking about, so you get two rows, which allows the trees to be closer in spacing. And then now you have security and you have visual. That's our thoughts, listening to what we're hearing so far. I think that bridges most of the gaps very reasonably.
Okay, that's our side. That's our side. But what about the Route Nine side? Are you taking down those trees?
Where's your site plan? Do you have, do you have a site plan, Jim?
Because what I was told, or what I heard was that.
She's talking about, are you talking about here, ma'am?
Yeah. I heard that that was coming down, so that.
You're leaving all this, right, Jim?
This is, that peninsula's staying.
That's staying?
Yeah.
So next to Fowler House, I heard that that's staying.
Yeah, we're not removing this peninsula.
Okay.
And that existing, the existing trees that are there now, they're not going to be disturbed? That are within that area?
Say again, sorry.
So the existing trees and, and everything that's there now, that's not going to be disturbed?
No, I wasn't doing any grading or any work in that area. There's no utilities, nothing going on in that area. So I was not disturbing that area.
Okay, so there'll still be, there'll still be that, that natural buffer as well.
Now, what about the trees that are, I mean, the trees kind of fall somewhere between my property and their property? How do you cut down those trees? Some of them are like really right on, are you going to keep any of my trees?
If they're on our property, we got to take them down.
And if they're on my property?
Well, you can't touch them.
Even if the branches fall over to your side?
The canopy, the canopy of the tree, you're not going to touch the canopy of their tree.
The canopy of my tree, even if goes into your parking lot? Do you know what I mean, or into your side?
No, we have twenty, twenty-five feet from your property line to the park lot, so I don't think the canopy's going much past that.
Well, there's some pretty big trees. Okay. And as far as, can you just go over what the lighting is going to be? Because is it going to be, I know they're going to go off and on, but are they low impact?
They're high-efficiency LED lighting, full cutoff fixtures. We developed the plan, so we meet the, the town's requirement of not having more than a half-foot candle of lighting levels at any property line. They will be on a timer. They typically go on one hour prior to the opening business, then one hour after the close. In addition to, they're usually on a photo cell also, so they're not on an hour, they don't need to be when the sunlight's out like a day, they'll land like tonight.
My husband and I have done a lot of talking about the chemicals, okay? And I saw your response, which is a plan that you, that the plan is the plan. But how do we ensure that... See, what we're concerned about is that there's chemicals on the property that are close to our home. And this may come up again, we may have somebody else speaking about chemicals. And this may come up again. We may have somebody else speaking about chemicals, but there's chemicals on that property.
Right, and the chemicals that are going to be, should be stored within the building?
Right, that I know. But what if they're not? Who says that they are going to be? I wouldn't be concerned if my property wasn't so close. If Dunkin' Donuts was there, I'd have no problem at all if they were building. But we're having something with chemicals that's so close to my property that if somebody, if there's a spill, they're supposed to do certain things. But how do I know they're doing that? How do I know it's not getting into my well? Can I have my well checked now and then checked again to see if there's any difference in my well? Because we have well water. It's not like we have town water. I mean, we're.
May I interrupt you again? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. So, just in an effort to bridge the gap here, when you're saying the chemicals, they're a product for sale. So, they're being maintained, they're, first of all, how our employees handle them, there are OSHA regs that go to that. How they're distributed, moved in through interstate commerce, that's EPA and Ds. How, who can buy them very often, depending on the chemical, you might have to be licensed by the DEC to even buy it. So, these are products that are for sale, no different than any other dangerous object, like a hatchet or a chainsaw that are being sold inside our store, being sold in our store. They, and so it's a product. So, I think that's a really important thing to understand here. This is a product that's being sold. It's going to go through, like any other piece of merchandise and inventory through our store. It will not be for sale outside our store, and we're more than willing to have a condition to that effect.
It doesn't, I'm sorry, it doesn't satisfy my concern.
No, I understand, but that's the, but that's what the state of the law is. And it's actually not regulated by the planning board. The planning board doesn't regulate whether these products are for sale or not.
But the planning board regulates who comes in to that area.
Yes, but when it comes to, when it comes to chemicals, enforcement is through the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Okay, they're, they're the ones that regulate, you know, storage, you know, amount, quantity that can be, quantity that can be sold, you know, which, which items can be sold also. Because there's a lot of items that aren't allowed to be sold in New York State that are allowed to be sold in other states around us. So, I mean, but they, they regulate it.
I really understand that.
Yes.
My concern is that we don't know if they're following what the rules and regulations are.
We have to take their word for it. They're going to follow the guidelines, like any, any other business.
At risk to me.
Tonight is not a meeting on the final site plan approval for this. I believe the applicant would probably be amenable to a note on the site plan that said no chemicals were to be stored outside. If there was anyone who observed chemicals stored outside, they could certainly report that. That would be a site plan violation. That would give the town enforcement powers. So, anything along those lines, but that, tonight's point is simply the secret determination, and it's not the end of the process.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Can I bring up something quick, Bruce?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jim, you had said that after, after an hour, after closing, that would, would all the outside lights be off, or just a certain number? And some, some will be left on for security purposes?
All the parking lot lights, they would be on if there's a couple of goos next on the front.
Yeah, I'm here.
Just get the microphone, please.
All, all the parking lot lights would go off one hour after. The only thing that remains on is there's a couple of ornamental lights along the face of the building. They're goos next.
Could, could, could you add that somewheres to the lighting plan?
Sure.
Like a note just to say that, what you just said, that, you know, an hour after closing, that they would be off, and that the only lights that will be left on are ones you said?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Caitlin Eckerson. I reside at Ten Fowler House Road. Good eve, good evening, everyone. I would like to thank Jim Cassidy for his reply to the concerns discussed at last month's meeting. I do have some comments and concerns that I wanted to bring up. Jim mentioned that sensor properties currently border a commercial zone, that this may not have, that this may have been considered during the appraisal process of our homes. I'm not sure if this is true or not, however, I would like to assure you that the marketability of our homes will be severely affected with a large corporate building being 25 feet off of our property. As I stated at the last meeting, this isn't a small building we're talking about. It's a large building with an additional large storage area that is being squeezed into a small plot of land. With the minimal buffer, buffer zone, our home values will certainly take a hit. It's going to be hard to sell these homes for their valued price, as I'm sure most people would not want to look at a large commercial building in their backyard. Jim also mentioned that erosion from blowing winds will be controlled by spraying water on construction surfaces, and their hope is to build during the fall and winter seasons, when wind erosion typically does not occur. While spraying water on the construction site will help air pollution, it certainly will not eliminate the risks by any means. As this is a large project that is being proposed, it will be difficult to keep the soil consistently wet enough during the construction phase to fully prevent soil from entering our property. One of the other neighbors had found an aerial shot of a tractor supply that was built in Connecticut. It was, the original purpose of this was to superimpose it into the Fowler House Road aerial view to show what it would look like. But if you look at the picture, there's clearly dust and soil particles all over the land and on the building. So, I'm sure that that's what our homes are going to look like, because there is no barrier. According to the EPA, pollution during construction is a valid and disconcerting issue. As the soil is disrupted during construction, possible contaminants such as P A H S, VOCs, S VOCs, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, and nitrogen oxides that may be present in the soil can become airborne, causing air pollution, can be carried in the dust from the construction, contaminating our soil, and can contaminate the groundwater runoff, which can then seep into the underground water table, thereby posing a risk of contaminating our wells. Additionally, construction itself causes a great deal of air pollution due to the VOCs, paint, diesel, oil, cement, asphalt, and other toxic chemicals that are being used that during, during construction, that, as I said during the last meeting, can cause many health concerns due to the minimal buffer zone. It's cited in that typical sources of potential groundwater contamination are fertilizer use and storage, construction areas, areas, asphalt, pesticide storage, and stormwater basins. While Tractor Supply states that any runoff will be directed away from the residential, residential neighborhood into a stormwater reservoir, this will still not eliminate the risk of contamination of our wells, as the contaminated water can seep into the underground water table, which feeds all of our private wells. I don't know if any of you have walked through the grounds behind our property, but my husband has, and as well as some of the other neighbors. You can find the land littered with tires, scrap metal, as well as other debris. While I do not know where all of this debris came from, I believe it's important to ensure that the land is not contaminated with any heavy metals, VOCs, or S VOCs prior to the commencement of construction. Because as I stated earlier, with this being right on top of our property, if the soil is contaminated, this is an additional source of air pollution or health risks that we are being exposed to. I think it's fair, considering this, to conduct a Phase II environmental assessment of the soil to protect the safety and well-being of the residential neighborhood. I would also like to comment on Jim's remark regarding the fall and winter being a low risk for wind erosion. We all know that the fall season is also known as hurricane season, and our area has been hit many times with strong storms that typically bring strong wind speeds as well as soil erosion. Jim also mentioned that the six violations pertaining to the sale of restricted pesticides mentioned at the last meeting were addressed, and that Tractor Supply has received Silver Lead awards. While this is reassuring, it still does not change the fact that these stores did sell restricted pesticides and storage of pesticides is directly linked to soil and well water contamination. We were told during the last meeting that deliveries are brought straight into the store from the loading dock. However, we have visited Tractor Supply Company in Patterson, New York, and Highland, New York, and have some concerns over what we saw. As you can see in the pictures, which I can pass around, this was in Patterson, New York. You can see boxes piled well over the, I don't know how tall this fence is, but there's boxes stored well over the fence. You know, we don't know what they are. I would like clarification on that because if there are any chemicals in there, I mean, we were being told they're supposed to be brought right into the store. I also have other pictures from both locations. I mean, it's very poorly maintained. And personally, my husband and I, our property is going to be right off this outdoor storage area. It's like a mess looking, so this is what we're going to be looking at. And that's, that's definitely a concern for us, and even the marketability of our home. Both locations had the equipment higher than the eight-foot chain link fence. And I don't fully understand, I guess, how our property with the retaining wall is going to be. I guess our big concern is just ensuring that, A, nothing be stored above that eight-foot fence, because we don't want to be looking at it. And I just don't even see how that's going to be blocked from our view. I mean, from our second floor window, we're going to be looking out into all of that. And I'll gladly show you the pictures of, of what we saw. And those are, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Just sort of come on up to the podium.
My name is Troy Pleger, Fourth Fowler House Road. I just want to make some comments in regards to the responses to my questions in the previous meeting. And I just want to clarify something. I'm a layman, and when it comes to about the lighting issue, the terminology that I'm used to is low impact. So, I'm not sure what the, the way you described it is, if that falls into that category or not. So, that's what I'm trying to clarify, that particular issue. And as you have been hearing, we're all concerned about security, and that's where the fence comes into play here of having something to give us a barrier, not just for visual purposes, but for protection type of issues. And there's a thing I did ask about blasting. They cited that it would be in accordance with the town state fire code requirements, whatever. They didn't really address the issue or answer if there will be blasting, and that's a concern in respect of us. Then there was another issue that was mentioned here about the stone wall that we have on our property. We've brought it up at various times, and it states here the stone wall is located approximately one foot onto the project. Now, I have a survey map from 1986, and it plainly shows that it's right on the border of our property. I just had a property preliminary survey type of thing. There's, there's permanent posts in the ground. And so, when we had our fence installed, we were making sure that our fence is going to be on our property. And if you, and they're marked plainly, and if you line them up, you know, there might be a curve in the wall, but, and it might go six inches into their property, but primarily is on our property line. And I'm not quite sure what was the need for mentioning about that one foot of the stone wall being on, on the project's site. I'm also, I asked about snow removal, and I maybe, maybe overlooked it, but I didn't see that being addressed. And then there is another concern that I have expressed before about that size of type, of that type of project, being on that property, the size of that store. And if I understood correctly, in past meetings, there was the mention that if Tractor Supply plans to move elsewhere, so there is no commitment that they're going to be there for a certain period of time or whatever. And there's been instances with the town dealing with, being presented with, this is what we're going to use this site for, for example, the CBD store, it's right down the road from us. That was for pharmaceutical purposes. Well, just recently, there was a presentation of that most likely being developed into recreational use. And Town Board Councilman William Beal was very dismayed about the transference of that, the identified purposes of that site being used for other purposes that necessarily the town can approve or disapprove or not, or what, I don't know exactly. So, this concerns me about that particular site. It's being presented one way for one particular purpose, but there's no long-term commitment in regards to what's going to be at that site. Yeah, and going back to my, that, that property issue, if there's a discrepancy on the property line, I'm not sure how that would impact on my other neighbors, too, if what they think the property line is and where the, the property owners, where their property line is. I know this is something I brought up once before, but again, I'm hoping the town, the board will take the time to research the violations that, that Tractor Supply committed through, in past years. And I know that their presentation is that, well, we don't do that, we're reputable, blah, blah, blah. But there's some very concerning issues in regards to EPA violations and stuff like, such as that. So, with all due respect, I'm hoping the town, the board will take the time to kind of research that a little bit and see what the reputation is. I guess that's it. Thank you.
So, again, Neil Alexander, just one thing, so you said you were a layperson that I, and I don't want to make a, I'm in, stay up here so that way you can hear me. I don't want to make it a back and forth, because that's not beneficial to anybody. It's outside the purview of this board, as far as the real estate issue about your fence. I think what's important to remember, and I think a lot of people haven't been fully aware of it, so a small encroachment like that, like for shrubs, or a hedge, or fence like that, that doesn't give rise to adverse possession. So, we don't, and our site plan doesn't require us to take it down. So, I don't think there's any reason for, and it wouldn't be here, anyone resolved a dispute over that. So, we have no intention of messing with that.
I just wasn't sure why.
It wasn't in our memo. I think it started out in, I think it started out in a staff memo first, and then we were responding to it, or maybe vice versa. But in any event, bottom line is, in 2008, they changed the New York State Adverse Possession Statute so that way little things like this didn't become a big deal. So, I just want to give you a comment about that. Our plan on blasting, we have no intention of blasting. We're not clairvoyant, though, either, right? So, based on the soils, based on the soil mapping, based on what we've done as far as reasonable, normal due diligence in this situation suggests that we don't need to blast. It's possible that we may encounter a situation, there may be a piece of ledge that just comes on a weird diagonal instead of staying at the, at the same levels of the rest of its ledge, and we may need to address that. If, we have to come back, well, depending on the nature of what we have to do. If it were an extreme situation, yes, we'd have to do pre-blast surveys of everyone's foundation. We, there's so much, I won't even get into it, that we'd have to do. If it's a jackhammering, we'd have to work with the town on that jackhammering. But if it was actual blasting, no, there'd be a pre-blast survey, the doorbell would ring, there'd be all kinds of protocols. I think what's hard, and I respect this, because, you know, everyone's got their specialty, this is what I do for a living, you know, a couple thousand hours a year, is there's so many codes that are already in place protecting you. There's, what's the zoning code? And the planning board's job is just to enforce the zoning code as it's written. Mrs. Roberti, who's sitting right there, it's her job, once an approval's given, to make sure that everybody in town lives within their approval. So, if a phone rings and someone calls her, and she, and, and it sounds like a reasonable, incredible violation occurring within her discretion, she's going to go out there and take a look at it. There's so many different people interacting, I'm sorry.
All right, it's, yeah, let's stick to the questions. I mean, in terms of everything else, I mean, we've, it's been explained, I know.
Help understand that this isn't, like, the board's.
I mean, I can under, I understand about the things, the encroachments that may come off, you know, that within, I mean.
And I think there's a dedicated snow area on the site, right in front of the.
That's hard to make. Yeah.
We, we identified areas on the plans as to where we anticipate stockpiling snow and any access to that area move. So, we have some areas along the front, the two islands in the back here that would be able to put snow. The other thing, no, is on, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm a soft stalker.
What are you hearing?
Yeah.
But you pointed to the lower corner where that was the residential area, you went through the whole thing.
It's graded in a manner, so when it melts, it comes back into the parking lot, into our drainage system. That's why I identified. That's why I identified.
So the snow deposited in the lower corners there?
These two areas. These are on top of the retaining wall. They're up at the elevation of our parking lot. They're graded in a manner so they slope back towards the parking lot. So when the snow melts, it gets back into our drainage system, conveyed to our stormwater management system. In addition to by incorporating this berm, now the top of the berm is higher than our drive aisle. So when a snowplow comes down that side, now we have a three-foot wide snow shelf, sort of snow stored on that three-foot area. But as it melts, it comes into our drive aisle, picked up by our drainage system. So no snow melt goes on to abutting properties.
I would be concerned about that corner of mass amounts of snow being deposited there. If any effort could be made or agreed to, every effort would be made in principle of putting it at the northern end. That would be greatly appreciated by all local homeowners, far as I'm concerned.
Sure.
And my question, what about the issues that I raised about EPA and all that kind of stuff and the violations?
Yeah, I think we've been clear, very clear on that. You know, that's not this board's jurisdiction, we're in compliance, and mistakes happen nationwide. Because, you know, we have to comply with 50 different states plus international codes. And every now and then, something gets shipped to the wrong place. And that's essentially from reading what you sent to us, that's what happened. It has to do with a product being shipped to a place where it wasn't supposed to be sold. And that was the violation. And that's an inventory management issue. And, you know, that's not a, I think there was a mischaracter, to miss, I think that to claim that somehow that deals with hazardous waste is a complete mischaracterization of the situation. It's a product that includes regulated materials, and it was sent in a place where that product isn't allowed to be sold as one state versus another state. So as far as we're concerned, you know, we've complied and will continue to comply with whether it's OSHA, EPA, DEC, or other regulations.
I'm just kidding.
Okay, let's address the board because they can't have the going back and forth. I mean, we've addressed.
He came up here.
I know, I understand. At this point, we have to take a little more control to move the meeting on. All right, thank you. All right, yes, you have a question? You have to come on up to the podium.
Please say I'm kind of silly, but I'm also concerned about the workers that are doing the construction and the amount of smoking that goes on during that time and the secondhand smoke. Because I'm out in my yard a lot, I have a dog, okay? And I have a daughter with asthma, so I don't know how that can, I don't know what you can do about that.
No. Though we have, we have no control over that issue.
Okay, and I didn't, I don't think I got an answer to my well question. If I have my well tested before work begins?
If you wish to have it done, you can go ahead and have it done on your own.
Right.
And then you would have a record, a baseline record of what you have. For some reason that there's a problem with your water quality in the future, you would have that record to go by to compare the two.
Okay, thank you.
You won. Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay, seeing that there's none, a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll say.
Okay, a motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have the negative declaration, which had been prepared by the planner. Get a motion to approve, I believe actually before we approve, we do have one line that has to be amended.
Two lines.
Okay.
And I think this is your second or third version. This has redlined, we've had this for a while, so why don't I just go over the changes? So they're both on page six. So in item number 15, after the sentence, "There is no blasting expected with construction of the proposed action," it would be an additional sentence which would read, "Should any blasting become necessary, it will occur in full compliance with federal, state, county, and town laws."
Okay.
And then in number 18, at the end of 18, it says also, "The neighboring residential properties would be visually screened from the proposed action by a berm." And then we would have, "With a solid decorative fence at the base of the residential side of the berm, and two staggered rows of conifers at the top of the berm, the good side of the fence will face the residential properties." Period. That's the end of the sentence and paragraph.
Okay. Okay, so, does the applicant have any questions regarding the negative declaration as amended?
Would you not?
Okay, thank you. All right. Motion from the board to approve the negative declaration as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so I guess with that, I guess you have any other questions regarding this application?
One question left, I think, is more of housekeeping. It's in order to get, we're going to go to the ZBIA next week, and then we'll, your only meeting once in August, is that correct?
That's correct.
August 5th?
No, I'm sorry, August the 12th. We had to, we had to change our date due to a conflict with the town board.
So in order for us to come back and be on that agenda, are we automatically on that or is there anything you need from us in order to work on the resolution with staff between now and then on the site plan? Because it sounds like there are few conditions we'll have to work through.
Yeah, I think we need, I think there's some things that needed to be hashed out.
Have you guys done anything yet with water and sewer connections?
Yeah, we have, we've, the town has.
Details? I don't think we have details yet of all that, do we? Pump station, and we don't have like a SWIP yet? I think we need to get that information before we should consider.
So you have a storm management, you don't have a full SWIP?
We aren't a full SWIP yet, no.
We don't have a full SWIP yet, and then I think we're waiting on rates from you guys for sewer and water. Otherwise, our map plan report is pretty much ready to go. And I think back in May, the town board authorized you guys to, we posted a $7,500 escrow, I think, back in May.
I'll have to check and see where that is. Yeah, I don't know.
I know there's been some changes in all that. What we're getting, not to seem anything other than grateful to take this step tonight, we're just starting to get worried about construction season and winter mix and things like that. Obviously, with Indiana BAT, we can't build till October 1st, but we're trying to get as much, be ready to go October 1st and know what our conditions of approval are and what we have to do in order to make sure we get there. And we know we have a town board process that we need to push on, and now that we have the NEGDEC, we can move forward with that because the NEGDEC included that process.
The other thing I have to check out is, I don't know if you need Health Department approval or not for the sewage pump, pump chamber. I don't know if that's just the town approval or that's, that's something that I'm going to have to look into.
Yeah, I mean, I think these are all things that can be made, conditions of approval. I mean, we're not expecting to get an approval without, you know, a laundry list of conditions.
Well, if you need Health Department approval, you're not going to be done by October 1st if you haven't like submitted anything yet. I mean, with their, you know, backlog right now.
Yeah. So I, I mean, at this point, I mean, maybe it'd be the best bet is to spend the time, you know, between now and the September meeting, to work with the staff to get, you know, a pretty much complete package together that addresses all the issues so that it can be submitted in time for the September meeting, so we can review it as well as, you know, the professionals already have reviewed it to go forward from that point.
Then you'll know if you have your verance yet or not.
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll know that in a week. Yeah, what would this submission deadline be anyway for August?
Well, for the planning board, for the August meeting, well.
Water.
There's still time. You have a couple hours.
You've got a couple, don't tell me. All right, understood. I just, I think, you know, we understand what you're saying. I think you understand where our pressure is.
No, I do, and I do understand.
As long as we can work to bridge the gap, that's really what it's about, the public standpoint.
Right. But I think, you know, with there being some open-ended issues, the things that need to be addressed, you know, on the plans, you know, and providing, you know, the engineer and the planner with those documents.
Yep.
You know, if you take the time, put that together, I think that would, you know, be to your benefit, you know, and submit for the, you know, the September meeting.
Understood, understood. The September, what's the September? And what's, okay, and what's the submission deadline? Thank you.
Tomorrow.
Day after tomorrow.
August 7th.
August 7th, okay. So we will coordinate very closely with Pete's office, too, because I think it's mostly at this.
Well, David's office, too.
There are a few things, okay. We will be emailing very soon. Thank you very much.
Okay, welcome.
All right. No, you can go ahead and cut.
Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding the Accura Tractor Supply Cross-Access Easement Plan. So we still have that application to also review. They're two separate, you know, being there two separate topics because more pertains to the Accura side of the project.
Well, put that back up and. Good point.
Yes.
So essentially, I think, I think this leads, because the NEGDEC covered both, so.
It did address, yes, it did address both projects.
So I think what this relates to from our perspective is just the separation of the properties from the standpoint of the changes. I mean, obviously, Jim's spoken to you and can speak to you some more about how and where the changes are going to be on the Accura property and how the circulation of the cars will work. As you know, right now, they're essentially, Accura is exiting through our, across a portion of our property today. So this is just changing that, creates better stacking and queuing for both, and I'll let Jim do that in a minute. We do have a, we do have an agreement that has been executed. I'm not sure if you all have seen that or not. If you haven't, we can get a.
Yes, I believe we were forwarded the cross easement.
So, so other than Jim sort of showing you the nuts and bolts, is there anything else you need from us at this time?
So just double check. David, was there anything that you had regarding this?
No, we defer to the town attorney regarding the legalization and to Peter's office regarding site distance for the new access to Route 9.
And the only thing from legal is, we want to make sure that this is listed as an amended site plan for Accura so that it's technically a separate action, even though it was covered by the NEGDEC, so that there's no issue because it's a separate site plan.
Right. Yeah, just an amendment to their site plan, their current site plan. Okay. Peter, do you have any comment?
Yeah, we had some comments. Jim, I think, is going to be talking about the access and how, you know, the traffic, traffic pattern is going to work. We talked about details for the segmental block retaining wall. As we had mentioned in there, we recommended a black chain link fence, which Jim has talked about. And then the only other thing we just had is something that will work out with Jim in terms of what the specific type of blacktop curb that they're going to put down. But other than that, other than that, that was it. And I believe that the DOT has already approved, approved the access.
Yes, they did. Yeah, they did submit a letter.
Yes.
That they were, that their concerns were.
Addressed, right.
Addressed, yes.
Right.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. The only other open item is whether the planning board feels that a public hearing is necessary on this matter or whether you want to waive the public hearing.
Yes. Okay. This is what the board needs to address that. Are there any other questions other than whether or not we should have a public hearing?
When would that be? When would that public hearing be?
Do we feel that we need to have one for?
No.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure everybody's feels so. So let's make a motion to waive the public hearing for.
I'll make that motion.
For the Accura, for the Accura Cross-Easement Plan.
I'll say.
Okay, motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay, so we have one nay. So Mr. Aldaddy voted nay, the rest of the board voted aye. So that motion carries, so we will not have a public hearing for this project. Okay, so I guess at this point, it seems like everything's moving forward at this point. I guess we'll, we need to wait for the cross, for the easement to be executed?
No, that can be made a condition of approval. And I believe it's executed, it's just a question of whether the planning board attorney, the other planning board attorney has had a chance to review it yet.
There's no real open issues regarding the, that would hold back from us voting on a resolution to, or having you draft a draft resolution?
I think we should do them simultaneously, these two projects, because they're so wedded together.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So we could do that, so that'll give them time to address any open-ended issues so we don't have to write them in as conditions?
Right.
Okay. And then we could possibly have that prepared for.
The September meeting.
The meeting when the Tractor Supply project comes to.
Right.
To its time for a resolution.
You're both together, yes.
Okay. Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr.?
Chairman, I voted nay to dispense with the public hearing because it is very important to people in their homes that they should be heard. And I think that something like this is critical. It should be done. I think that we need to listen. It's just there's a little time involved for us, but for residents, it's their livelihood, it's their everything. It's their future, their investment. So they should be able to speak as they see fit, and I think we should listen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Okay.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is special use permit regarding Wappinger's Route 9D solar farm.
I am Nick Vanvis, I'm with the Jasing Companies here representing the applicant, Nexamp. This would, this would be an amendment to the site plan that was approved originally by this board regarding the Route 9D solar farm. I'm here with Rob Ritchie tonight from Nexamp, who's going to speak to exactly what we're proposing. And then I'll get into a little bit more of the specifics of the scope of this work.
Rob Ritchie from Nexamp. So the previously approved solar farm, we are proposing an addition of battery energy storage to that facility. The state has come up with very lofty energy storage goals, 1,500 megawatts by 2025 and 3,000 megawatts by 2030. The goal of that is to have an energy grid that produces energy more when it's most needed. And solar arrays peak around 12 to 2:00 p.m., which is not when the power is most needed on the grid. Typically, the grid's peak is in the mid to late afternoon, the early evening. And what energy storage paired with solar allows us to do is store the solar energy that's produced in the morning and during the middle of the day when it's not as much needed for the surrounding area, store it, and then. Store it and then discharge it off the grid later in the day. What this actually means for the site is two battery energy storage containers. These are roughly 50-foot long by nine-foot containers. Within them are battery modules, they are lithium-ion batteries. The provider that we are working with is NEC Energy Solutions. They're based in Westboro, Massachusetts. They have a very extensive history of installing these systems throughout the world, over 400 megawatts of systems installed. And what we're proposing here is a two-megawatt system capable of discharging energy for four hours. NEC has a very strong safety record, no incidents with their systems anywhere. Not only have there not been any, any fires, any sort of safety issues, but the integrated fire suppression systems have never even been activated. There will be integrated fire suppression, it's a gaseous agent that dissipates the heat in the case that there were any sort of fire issue. Taking a step back there, if there were any electrical issues identified, the entire system will shut down automatically before it could ever get to the state.
What does it use for suppression?
Say that again, sorry?
What does it use for suppression?
Novak 1230 is the gaseous fire.
It's not a Halon?
No, no, it's a very, very safe, clean fire agent. So Nexamp will be constantly monitoring the system 365 days a year from our Nexamp Energy Center, which is located in our Boston headquarters. NEC Energy Solutions will also be monitoring the systems as well from their headquarters, and will have the ability to locate any issues, diagnose any issues, and contact first responders or maintenance technicians if there were to be an issue.
I'm sorry, so for functionality and for emergencies, that monitoring system is in place?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So we have a network of operations and maintenance folks, both internal and subcontractors that we work with to dispatch for various issues.
That's great.
Okay. The, do you have information regarding, you know, these systems and the safety features? You know, in terms of the extinguishing system and things like that? I think that would be.
We do have that information that we can provide on the specific safety features and the safety history as well, along with a first responder plan, so that first responders can be trained up on what might be needed. Nexamp regularly trains first responders on our systems, our solar sites, as well as energy storage before they go operation.
Okay, good. If you could provide that, I mean, we'll also share that with the, you know, the, the agency that has first response and possibly the other town agencies that also respond there, but one question I do want to bring up, because in the past resolution, there was some questions regarding, actually, it was a, in the resolution was written regarding emergency responder training. You're still, again, bound to that portion of it. Will that be taking place prior to the system going online?
So the, the one caveat here is that the solar facility might go online before the energy storage is completed.
Okay.
If they do go online at the same time, we'll incorporate the training at the same time as well. If they're separate, we're glad to have a separate training, but both of those will occur before the system goes online.
Okay. Does anybody, any board members have any questions?
How are the batteries, are they on a, in a building, and what are they, on a cement slab? How do they, because they don't show us anything about the structure of that.
We can provide indicative drawings and pictures of what it's going to look like. Essentially, NEC systems are, it looks similar to a shipping container, a metal shipping container, environmentally sealed, and it's a metal shipping container, batteries are within racks inside of that. They come shipped separately, so you have the containers arrive on site, and then the battery racks arrive on site separately, and that's due to DOT restrictions, how much weight you can take over roadways.
Is that on a slab of concrete?
It's on piers.
It's on piers?
Yeah, a set of piers.
Okay.
NEC's recommended foundation design, it's a set of, and we can provide these drawings as well. Square foundations at each end of the container that are buried with four piers coming up from each.
Are these containers waterproof? Because, I mean, I own a few of them, and they do tend to leak.
Waterproof and airproof as well. The batteries need to be kept at a certain temperature in order to be in good operation. There is an integrated HVAC system to maintain the temperature of those. It's mostly the operation of the batteries that needs the temperature control, not so much environmental conditions. So when you're using them a lot, they generate heat, you use the HVAC to cool it down.
Are these protected with any ballards or anything around this? Keep somebody from driving into it for who knows what reason?
So these will be within our fenced area, which meets electrical codes, but they will be located next to our access road within the site, so maintenance vehicles, if there were first responders on the site, so we will have ballards to protect.
You will have ballards around them, okay, because the employees are most likely to run into them. Okay, you're going to show us all of that then?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, does any of the professionals have any questions?
Not at this point.
No.
So, so I guess at this point, we'll wait until they provide us with some visual on the, on the structure. Okay, before we take any further action. All right, so, I mean, if you can get us answers to the questions that we're looking for, and get those submitted, we can get you on a, on a future date, and then move forward from there.
I could just say a couple more things. More of a question to the, the process here. This is an amendment to a site plan that was already approved. The facility is located on Route 9D. Are we going to have to go through County 239M review for this action as well?
I would think so.
You would think so, okay. Is there some way we could push that forward now so that we have that, you know, in hand for the Nexamp that we, we meet?
I think you normally send it up to the county, but the county may want some of this safety information as well. So I would wait till the application's a little more complete, and then send it all up to the county at the same time.
Okay. And just to clarify, there's no technical comments at this time?
No.
No?
Okay, so once we get that information, we'll go ahead and be put onto the next agenda, depending upon when the submission is made.
Sure.
Unless you...
We already established that August is out of the question.
Yeah, I mean, how long do you think it's going to take to get the information together? I mean, we...
It's all standard information provided for the projects. We have that available.
Within a couple of days?
Sure.
Okay, so, I mean, if we can get it, you know, relatively quick, within a, I mean, by the, you know, if you get it in before, you know, Wednesday or Thursday this week, I mean, we could possibly put you on for the August agenda. Pete, do we have, is there a lot on for the August agenda right now, that you know of? No, okay. So we'll wait, we'll wait the submission, and we can go from there. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is Wappinger Farm State Subdivision.
Good evening, everyone. Derek Day, day engineering, representing Wappinger Farm Estates. The project site is a 61-acre parcel located at 105 Robinson Lane, just next to the baseball fields. The applicant wishes, is proposing 11 residential lots, eight on the west side of Robinson Lane and three on the east side. The proposed lots range from roughly an acre to about four acres. The former applicant and owner wish to dedicate whatever land was not going to be used for lots of the town for recreational fields. However, the DEC is also in review of the project, and they wish that we propose a means of mitigation to disturbance for breeding's turtles and to propose a nesting habitat. And the current applicant and owner wishes that whatever remaining land on the parcel wasn't going to be put towards the lots, actually now becomes part of Lot Number Eight. Site distances were performed on the, site distance analyses were performed on the lot back in the spring, test wells were also conducted in the spring as well. We are pretty far along in the process with the Board of Health, probably getting it close to approval now. And in regards to the latest set of comments, we are in general agreement. We do, however, respectfully request a waiver to show locations, sizes, and species of trees due to the number that are on the site. And we believe we're at a point with the project where we respectfully request to set the public hearing for the project.
Okay. All right, in terms of the tree waiver, the re-sizing of the trees, has any surveying been done regarding any of the trees? In regards to trying to save larger ones, the larger established trees?
A lot of those trees, I don't know.
Oh, sorry, need to use the microphone, yeah. Well, it's also being recorded. You could take the mic out if you want.
One of the issues is, we look at the trees, the trees are, you know, they're aged, and we really think the majority of them, I don't know if you guys remember how long.
They what? Oh, the microphone's off?
Is there a green light?
There is.
No, thank you.
Okay, so.
So what happened is, when we look at these trees, along Robinson Lane, when these were, when these were planted back in the day, a lot of them suffer from, you know, from age, and some of them are in pretty bad shape. After looking at them, we did have them surveyed, we had them surveyed when we did our sightline analyses. I actually don't think it's a good idea to keep them. If you guys want, you can wander on down Robinson and take a look at them. We really think that the majority of the, of the work will be in the front of the lots. And Derek touched on it, but I want to go back to it if I could. We're going to keep most of our development, obviously, in the front. The DEC, we have met with them. They find this to be turtle habitat. We, if you all remember, we were going to dedicate this to the town to enhance the ball fields. DEC thinks that we can't do that, or has made it clear we can't do that. So we're, we have to keep it to maintain this turtle habitat. So we've kept our development, as you can see, to the front portions of the lots. And if you drive down that road, you're going to see that those trees are really not in any good shape. We would like to propose to remove them and to plant street trees, which would obviously be safer, and we could put them in areas where the site distance wouldn't be an issue, from driveway to driveway and so on. So that's just something we'd like to request from the board, to locate trees that we think will come down and just find fruitless.
Okay. What's the board's feeling about waiving the tree survey?
I know the area, I know the trees he's talking about, and there's not much there worth saving. If there's anything worth saving.
Do you have anything in writing from the DEC about the trees or the turtle?
DEC is not the trees. DEC is strictly the turtle habitat, which we have submitted.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
Trees and turtles.
Well, one of our comments was that we'd like you to put some, put some rough stakes where the driveways are going to be. And then I want to get with the highway, highway superintendent and go out and just look at, you know, the driveways, and then, you know, at that same time, we could look at, you know, the trees too. And of course, any other board members can go out and look at the trees.
Okay.
Okay. David, do you have any?
Only that, and we've made this comment before, there was a rezoning as part of all this, and we're still researching, or Jim is researching, whether there were commitments made by the applicant at that point in time regarding the dedication of parkland, the construction of recreation facilities, that kind of thing. So we're still doing that research.
Well, my only answer to that is, that was done under a prior owner, not, not to say that the new owner didn't want to do that, he did. But when we went to the DEC, this came up, that this is turtle habitat. We tried to negotiate with them that, you know, we'd like to give this to the town.
Yeah, I, I heard you before, Mark.
But the point is...
I appreciate what you're saying, but if a commitment of some sort was made, maybe there needs to be some other benefit.
Or the real issue also is whether there is a document that was between the prior owner and the town board that may need to be amended before something can go forward with this project. Because if there, I'm sure if the town board and the DEC are in agreement that it's turtle habitat now and not appropriate for parkland, then something maybe need to be done. But we just don't know now whether there's that prior agreement in place that would need to be modified.
So who does that?
Jim will track it down. I don't think that should, and to the board's point, I don't think that should hold up scheduling a public hearing if the board's inadmissible to doing that, that can run at the same time.
Okay.
And the, the agreement may apply to access, successors and assigns, so it could affect this owner as well.
Right.
He takes no exception.
I heard what you said.
Yeah, he takes no exception.
Yeah, I appreciate what you said.
Be happy to give it to the town. Just one of those things the DEC threw at it.
Yep.
Don't speak too loud, because they want to take your property back too.
Do they?
Oh, yeah.
Uh-oh.
They, they made a claim that that shouldn't have happened anyway, and I was like, oh, good, so.
Okay, well, I guess, first I guess we want to schedule a public hearing. I guess we need to know some, Secretary, I guess, would there be enough? Well, when, when would they be able to have a public hearing? Because they're going to have to make notification to residents. How much time?
August 20th.
So they would do the September? Do the August meeting?
It's almost a month from now.
Enough time? We can? All right. It's not working? Okay. Okay, so that would be the August 12th meeting. Okay, so we need a motion to set a public hearing for this project for August the 12th.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
What do you think, you can get those driveways rough-staked, I mean, they're not, they're not dead nuts, but just like approximate.
No, you can stay on the daily.
Okay.
So, we'll talk for any...
All right.
Okay.
Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is Old Hope Well Commons amended site plan.
Good evening, Workday, day engineering, representing Old Hope Well Commons. What we're proposing this evening is, the applicant is proposing to install decks on the back of, excuse me, Building 200, which would face the west, and also the installation of approximately 320 feet of six-foot-high chain-link fence that would have slats, vinyl, black vinyl slats in it, just to provide screening from a piece of property to the northeast. And that's it. And that's it.
Okay. All right, the, one question we have is on the back of the buildings, is there going to be any lighting? On those porches?
I have no lighting at the back, but I mean, I just won't light over the, next to the door.
Next to the door, what type of light?
Just one of those small, I can get you a picture of it, just small, little light, you know, sixty watt.
Okay.
Just to light the deck.
Just to light the deck itself. It'd be more of a downlight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, so any of the board members have any questions?
Has any work been done already to this project?
This project? Yeah, the buildings are under construction. No, I, oh, I'm sorry about this, the decks themselves.
Right.
The doorway, or sorry, the windows have been prepared as doorways. So in, if the event, the board approves it, they can install the doorways right away.
Shouldn't that have achieved approval to do that before you did it?
Possibly.
It seems easier to ask for forgiveness than for permission.
Can we stay in this evening?
Thank you.
Okay, any other board members have any, any questions? No.
If there's going to be a fence, would you rather see a solid decorative fence versus a chain link with slats in it?
Um, that.
You mean like a vinyl fence?
Some sort of fence as opposed to, I mean, I am not a fan of chain link, chain link with slats.
That's true. I mean, this is bordering the neighbor's properties, so maybe something a little more decorative would be more appropriate.
What would you like to see, PVC?
I think so.
I agree.
White?
Well, we don't have much choice in color, right? Just, just two, white, white or beige? Do they really?
So white?
What do you, what do you think, David? White? Beige? What color?
I like white.
White it is.
Mark, the, the footings for the decks, do they encroach in the wetlands in any?
No, they're actually, they're, they're only four feet behind the building and they were disturbed when the foundation was put in.
Okay, okay.
Even though this isn't a public hearing, I think the board should acknowledge the receipt of the letter from Mr. Vostwick for the record with concerns about the property, just so that we have it on the record that it was received.
Yeah, so. Do we want to have a public hearing for this, for the amended site plan? What's the board's feeling?
Public hearing?
It's just going to prolong the process?
No.
Not going to make a change?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, all it is, it voices public comment. I mean, we've already received a letter from the neighbor regarding, I believe.
Yeah.
But she did talk.
The items have been addressed.
No, 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 she did.
Is this another means of egress though, in case of emergency, is this better for this type of situation?
It's a place for them to stand. There's no stairs proposed.
Right.
Yeah, a place for them to.
So it is a safety factor in a sense.
Okay. All right, I do know that we did review earlier that the, that there are plantings going along the back property line. Obviously, that will all be put in, there's, you know, there's rows of white pines being put in. Basically, every, you know, fifteen, every fifteen feet on center.
Yep, all the way.
Along that line, okay, as long as that's being, taken care of, that helps with the screening. Nothing's changed there. So I guess we'll take a vote regarding the public hearing. You get a, I guess, a motion to waive the public hearing?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to waive the public.
Second. Okay, so motions are made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then obviously there's one opposed and, okay, so let the record reflect. So we've waived the public hearing for this, for the amended site plan, for the project. I guess at this point, it's, I guess, authorizing the planner to write a resolution. Being that the applicant has answered the questions. The only thing is a, if you could submit the exact light that you're looking to, to install. Definitely looking for something that's, you know, that's shielded with a, with a downward light.
Okay.
So that the light doesn't project away from the building. I believe that, that's a preference of the board, if that could be done. All right.
What about the fence detail? Do you want to see detailed fence, like a catalog, catalog?
On a cut sheet for the.
I mean, it's up to you then.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, get approval on the fence also.
Okay.
All right, being that, do we want to authorize the planner to write a resolution for the amended changes?
Yes.
Okay, so get a motion to authorize the planner to write a resolution for the amended site plan?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
I'll have it for the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll have that done and assuming that the submittals, that those two submittals are made and the board approves it, we can vote that night on the, on the amendment.
It's night.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Within the next couple of days, I guess, right, you'll have it done.
We can get it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, our next item this evening is New Hackensack Road roof mounted solar panels.
Evening, board. Thanks for taking the time out for us tonight. My name is Anthony Sakari, owner at New York State Solar Farm. And I'm working with Jason Nicoletti, who's opening up dental practice on New Hackensack Road, which we're, we have a solar system proposed on. I was hoping that after we go through this, you could see what we're doing and then also if there's originally proposing the ability to waive a public hearing on this and if we couldn't, then to try to get on as soon as possible. There's, in the code, we're under a commercial entity building, which we are, it's a dental practice. But the building that we're putting it on is basically a residential home under a residential meter. And it's, the system we're proposing on any residential home would get approved with a normal building permit, which we originally proposed and got denied and then got referred to the planning board for a special use. So with the commercial code that you have for solar, it's like for the solar farms, for the large scale utility solar fields, which I totally stand behind. We were one of the first ones to do a project like that at Gardner. But for this, we're 42 solar panels. And if we actually proposed this exact system, actually larger, in the beginning of this year, got approved, that customer was installed. But it was just because it was residential, so going through the process, I just didn't know in the future. Just what I've seen is 25 KW and under is residential usually across the board. But just because it is commercial, that's where we stand today. But I brought some samples just so I could show you guys, if I can give those to you, just what we're putting up there, if that's okay.
Okay, show us what you have.
This is actually an exact replica of the panel we're putting on the roof. We're putting 42 of these on the backside of the roof. And if you look at an overview shot of the property, you could see that's actually a V shape. Nothing is facing the road. Everything is going to be behind the building and on the side of the building. So I'll just give this to you so you could see. This is actually the height as well.
Okay, so it'll only be on the, on the backside of the building, not the street side, correct?
There's going to be nothing on the street side. Originally, when I was talking to Jason, we actually do need more power for the building. But just to avoid anything with anyone seeing solar, we just stuck with everything on the backside of the property.
Okay.
And this is another, this is the question, just with the top, it's not the whole thing.
Right, it's just a different. Okay.
I'll just kind of go over just the system detail characteristics with you. The panels that we're using are all 360 watt, some power panels. So when we're deciding which panel to use on the project, we could have definitely used a cheaper panel that's less efficient and we would have needed more of those and they would have produced a lot less power. So we really tried to use the absolute best products, it'd take up limited space on the roof. That's why we just stuck with the back. And the, all the conduits that we did, everything is going to be hidden, nothing is going to be visible, street view. Everything is going to be inside. And that's where we're just, they had plans to open up the practice in a month from now and that's where we're trying to find the system as close to possible, you know, done before they moved into the building.
Okay. Any board members have any questions regarding this?
Mr. Chair, under the new, I'm not at that point yet, under the new secret regulations that were just enacted, this type of solar installation is a type two action. Because the House is not on the national list of Stark registers or anything like that. So roof mounted solar, regardless of whether it's on commercial or not, for secret purposes will be a type two.
So that basically means you don't need to do it next day?
Okay, so it's type two, so I don't have to worry about.
There's no environmental analysis after that point, if it's determined that it's a type two.
All right. All right, so I mean, being that, I guess, nobody has any questions regarding it. I mean, there's only one item that you need to, that you do need to address though, being the close proximity to the airport. And I'll refer this over to the attorney so she can explain it a little, little easier than me having taken notes earlier.
The easiest way to do it is I'm just going to refer you to the town, there's a town code section that deals with ground mounted. But because you are so close to the airport, we just want to make sure that there's no glare from your facility to the airport that would affect any flight patterns. So the code section is 240-57B7.
240-57B7?
Yes.
And just, just so I have an idea, is that just, we submit that information back to you guys with that?
Basically, it says for solar farms located within 500 feet of an airport, the applicant must complete and provide the results of the solar glare hazard analysis tool, the HG, HAT, for the airport traffic control cab and final approach paths consistent with the interim policy FAA review of solar energy projects on federally obligated airports or most recent versions adopted by the FAA. So once you provide that information.
I just want to make sure that we're not listed as a solar farm though, since we're.
No, no, we're not saying, we're not, we're just because you're so close, we wanted to just make sure that there's no glare.
Okay, that's, that's no problem. And, and in our, in the panels we use, it has anti-reflective glass and it's listed right in the data sheet, so that's no problem.
Beautiful.
Can you submit this to the airport?
But that goes directly to the county, right?
The county airport.
So do I submit that to them or to?
Yes, and then they'll give you a letter which you'll share with us. They'll probably copy us anyway.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. So I guess basically it's a minimal nature. It was site plan, we have to waive site plan, or public hearing for the site plan. We get a motion to waive the public hearing, being it's a minor nature?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion's made in second, it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries, so we have that. We have a motion to authorize the planner to write a resolution approval for this, you know, for the solar panels, with a condition that the applicant supply a letter from the county airport that they have no objections or if they have any requirements on the panels.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motions made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any?
The only other item, Mr. Chair, is that we will need to make sure that this either doesn't need 239M review or if it does, we'll send it out.
Okay.
I think I, I'm actually.
This went to Dutch's County Planning.
Okay.
It went out on July 1st to the.
Beautiful.
Oh, so it was in Dutch's County Planning, okay. So we'll have to wait, obviously, in the interim, I mean, we could authorize the resolution, we just can't do anything until we receive that comments.
Well, by the August meeting, it will be more than 30 days, so.
Yeah.
So you'll be able to act regardless.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so.
And just that quote again, just so I can make sure, 240-57B75.
240-57.
And it's B7.
B7, gotcha.
It's basically in the code section under the ground mounted solar.
Okay, perfect. So the next steps for us is just to get that back over to you, wait for the resolution.
So we need, so we have to wait, obviously, I guess, with lead agency, so we have to gain lead agency status, which is going to be a 30 day window.
No, there's no, it's a type two.
Oh, not for?
It's a type two action.
They're essentially exempt from secret.
Oh, that's, sorry, that's correct, you didn't say it was, yes. Yep, I back myself up, yeah.
Right. So I think it would be prudent to put the applicant on for the August meeting and then if we don't hear back from the airport, we can just defer.
We could push them out.
But.
Make it a condition.
That's actually true too. As David just said, we can make it a condition of the approval also, which is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that probably makes more sense.
All right, so we'll put it on, I guess, for the August, August meeting and hopefully in the interim, you can, you know, everything comes through.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, our last item on the agenda this evening is an extension regarding 228 Myers Corners Road.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Richard Rottenkobin, Eagle Avenue Enterprise, owner of 228 Myers Corners Road. Excuse my attire, I came straight from work, yeah.
It's okay, yeah.
I'm here to request an extension on my site plan due to the DPW's.
Right, the county DPW is doing.
Myers Corners.
Yes, okay. Okay, and you're requesting a one, one year, one year extension?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so at this point, a motion to.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion's made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so you've been extended out until August 30th of 2020. Hopefully, hopefully the project's done by then.
Don't be grumpy. Don't be grumpy.
What did? Yeah, okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to discuss this evening? Okay, so there's one last item to take care of.
Motion. I'll second it.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, George Trump.